Have your attention please. I'd like to bring the Regular City Council Meeting, April 20th, 2023, to a quarter. May we have roll call, please?
Jonathan McKay.
Here.
Michael Snar.
Here.
Bill Learman.
Here.
Bob Osborne.
Here.
Michael Albright.
Here.
Nick Ewman.
Here.
And Matt Hirkie.
Here.
Not everyone's here. Would you stand and join me in the pledge, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you join me in brief moments, please? Thank you. Under the President's agenda, we have a review and approval of the agenda. What is your pleasure?
Move it be accepted as presented?
Actually, I need to interrupt for a second.
Yes, sir.
I need to amend the agenda. We have an executive session on the menu for two different topics under item 16. We need to add subsection B, which would be authorization provided into an agreement based upon what may or may not happen. There may be possible action based upon what happens. So I need to add the possible action after the executive session, so.
So I move it be accepted as amended.
Second.
Motion second to accept the agenda as amended. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The agenda as amended is accepted. You also have before you the minutes of the April 6th Regular Council meeting. What is your pleasure?
Move it be accepted as presented?
Second.
Motion second to accept the minutes of the Regular Council meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are accepted. Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. First thing I'd like to do is introduce Tim Weiderold, who's going to speak to the Wilmington School System.
Would that something too? One of these days, we're gonna have a better sound system.
I certainly hope.
Hello, thank you for letting me come speak with you tonight. As Mayor Stanford said, my name is Tim Weiderold. I am the committee chair for the WCS School Levy. And I just wanted to come today and give you some quick information about it, make sure that the city council is aware of the levy happening. And just to get it on record, all the facts that we'd like for our community to know about. So we are presenting a .75 traditional school district income tax this year. It is no longer renewal, so it will be a new tax of .75. This will raise roughly four or 5.4 million annually to compensate for the 1% income tax that has failed the last three times. What this will do is continue no school fees, no pay-to-play, updating resources, textbooks, and things like that, as well as updating the technology through our school system. This is, again, an income tax. We've not done a property tax, and the school has not done a property tax, and wants to continue to keep it that way if possible. As a result, though, of not doing a property tax, WCS collects approximately $2,000 less per student than the state average. And so by doing it an income tax, we already are somewhat taking a hit. And so not passing this would be an even greater hit. This packet that I have, I'm reading off of it, I have copies for council as well. We have a five-year forecast, basically, that if this levy does not pass, in five years, we would be in an extreme deficit for the city schools. And poor schools are not good for our city. And so we're hoping for support in this and getting this levy to pass to help our school system here. Again, the last three times, November 21, May of '22, November of '22, it has failed. The last time that this rule passed was 2017, May of 2017. And again, this is taking it from 1% down to a .75% this time. What that looks like for our city taxpayers at .75, if you have a household income of $50,000, you'd be looking at $375 annually, $31 a month, or a dollar and 3 cents daily. So it is a decrease, obviously, from the first, for that 1%. But again, just wanted to come to council and give you a snippet of our facts as well. If you'd like to know more, Vote Yes WCS is online, and you can go to that website to get more information. You can also see that information on our Facebook page, as well as Wilmington City Schools' website has all of the district's facts as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Do we have questions for Tim?
Timmy, I would say one, I think it's a better high-volume campaign, you know, trying to get the message out. I think also with James Wilmington, Real Jones, so to speak, Dustin and Emily have done a great job, too, with the flyers and things that they put out, and podcasts and so forth. I think through social media and things like that, we've got to try and tell the story. Of course, we know my history with schools and so forth. But, you know, I think in education, sometimes we forget that we need to educate the public on where the tax money has gone and how it has been spent. And I think maybe that was just something that fell through the cracks in the last few campaigns. But I think this has been a better, well-organized, well-run campaign. And I still know, no matter what, people won't like to pay taxes, but you have to have, like you say, it's a part of economic development to good schools, is what we're hoping for, people to this community and businesses to expand and so forth.
This may not, it might not be in here. I know that the property tax portion of the school revenue is still in place. And I know, like everyone else in the room, the property valuation in the last several years has gone up and up and up. So by asking for a 3/4% income tax, does the increase in property value offset that difference? Or is there still a shortfall or a lea?
It will, there will not be a shortfall, but it will be just a very, a pretty much tighter budget at the .75. Although the board, when looking at all of the numbers, agreed upon the .75 for the aspect of it's a lower tax, but we can still get almost as much money as we were getting for the 1%. And so, yeah, so we're not making as much, obviously, but it's still going to cover what is needed.
It's able to be controlled in the budget, okay.
And going back about 10 years, more or less, if I'm trying to think off the top of my head, we made the move to let the 2 mil property tax levy expire on property taxes when I was on the board. If the income tax was approved, that was like giving back a windfall of $854,000, because that was the renewal thing. And of course, it started out as 5 mils, but it factored down because we can't bring in any more than, you know, set for $854,000. So it was a reduction for the taxpayers.
Thank you, Tim. We appreciate you stepping forward and cheering this thing. I'm going to record that I am going to support the school levy. My parents paid it when I was a kid. Now I'm paying it to get my grandchildren to the school system. And it's so important, like Bill said, when employers are trying to recruit people, bring them here, the number-one question, Sharon Macken twice touched on it, got it, the school system. I think we're really on the right track. Thanks.
Thank you, Tim.
Cleanup Day Wilmington, that's a birthday, April 22nd. It's from 9:00 till noon. We will meet here at the Municipal Building. You can follow us on Facebook at Cleanup Wilmington, or scan the QR code below with your phone app where you're from. So if you want to scan, I'll lay it right there. April 29th and 4th, Tint Cap is hosting the Blue Goose Spring Market. It's an open-air market for local small businesses selling aircraft products. May 4th, at 4, from 4:00 to 7:00, there's gonna be a Job and Community Resource Fair at Clinton County Fairgrounds. And beginning May 13th, Clinton County Farmers Market will be open for the season. Boy, that's another sign, the spring is here. It's going, again, it's from 8:30 to noon at the corner of Walnut and Sugar Green, same place it was last year. And they are looking for vendors as well as sponsors, contacts, all you can, and by email if you want to contribute. The tire recycling and household paint and household hazard waste collection, that's still gonna happen on the 29th from 9:00 to noon. You do need to pre-register for that, though, so we have an idea of what volume we're gonna, is gonna be brought in. To pre-register, you go to Clinton County, you go to county, start CO dot Clinton dot UH dot US recycle. Go get your enforcement report. I think we're looking good there. Hamilton continues to do an outstanding job. And again, I spoke about Sharon Macken, and I want to compliment her at the last council meeting for framing the issues of housing in the city. And my other comment, you know, we're hearing a lot of tough language on the street these days. Now, I've learned to expect criticism in this job, but I was surprised to read a police report on the threatening letter that was put on the door of Sugar Dream Ministries. And we all have opinions, and they vary. There's always some disagreement, that's inevitable, and it's appropriate. Threat of violence is not acceptable, is prudent. And I condemn this language and this behavior. The letter was signed on behalf of the Clinton County taxpayers. But let me assure you, these hate mongers do not represent me or this community. And on that happy note. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alder Vance is not with us tonight, so I assume we don't have any report. Safety Service Director, Mr. Schottiger.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have one piece of legislation. This is something we do each year this time. So I'm asking for three readings on a resolution authorizing the participation in the Ohio Department of Transportation Road Salt Contract for 2023. I am asking for three readings because they open this window up in April, and they have a deadline of May 1st. So it's like one of those where you, if you want it, and you've got to pass it now. Just to give you an idea of how we did with salt this year, we used about 1,300 tons of salt this season. We still have about 1,700 tons in the barn, so we're gonna be requesting 1,200 tons, basically replace what we used up last year. And we can, there's a variance on that at 10%, so 1,200 is what we will be requesting. Last year, we had $81.79 was our price, so we'll see what we get this year, but it's in with the whole state. So, any questions? Okay, thank you.
Need to have that resolution brought over, please.
Sure. I move for the first reading, Resolution 2318, by title only.
Second.
Motion by Bert, second by Learman, first reading, Resolution 2318. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Maybe the first reading, please?
A resolution authorizing participation in the ODOT road salt contracts awarded in 2023 and declaring end.
I move to suspend the rules and regulations and give Resolution 2318 a second, third reading, by title only.
Second.
Motion second for suspension, rules, roll call, please.
McKay.
Yes.
Snar.
Yes.
Learman.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Albright.
Yes.
Ewman.
Yes.
Hirkie.
Yes.
Motion carries. May we have second, third reading?
A resolution authorizing participation in the ODOT road salt contracts awarded in 2023 and declaring end.
I move to pass Resolution 2318 as read.
Second.
Motion second for passing, roll call, please.
Snar.
Yes.
Learman.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Albright.
Yes.
Ewman.
Yes.
Hirkie.
Yes.
McKay.
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 2318 passes.
That's all I have, Mr. President. And I'll let you know when the bids come in, what we, what we're looking for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schottiger. Moving into council committee reports, city revitalization, Mr. E. No report, Mr. President. Thank you. City Services Committee, Mr. E.
Just briefly, Mr. President, we had a, there was a public meeting involving the Wilmington Transit Service took place. And it was really a pretty enlightening meeting. Basically, it was focused on future directions, had a lot of good input from various members of the community and so forth. There is going to be another, by the time it gets here, I'll be done. There'll be, there'll be another public meeting. Hopefully, this one will be, will be another public meeting to discuss transit. Coming up, the dates and times will be announced. Hopefully, this will be at a more convenient time for most people to make this last, I think, 10:00 to noon, which is difficult for a lot of people to get to. So next, I'm gonna encourage you to do late afternoon or evening when more people can get there. That's all, Mr. President.
Well, Mr. Chair, I would like to bring up a couple of different things. And since I've also, I've been the one that's kind of forced to have late meetings, been working out of town, but I'm sure some of you know I did change positions, and I'm back in Wilmington. Threw to be out there at Best One, so I can get back to some of these meetings. Trying to evaluate, and I'm listening to concerns, as I've always tried to do with public, okay? I think our Rombach project, everything is coming along very well, okay? But I still know there's some people that have some angst out there, and I listen to what people have to say. My phone gets blowing up all the time. I would like for us to maybe sit down and analyze a few things in the future City Services Committee. I don't know that this could happen, but it's been brought to my attention. Is there a possibility that we can reduce the speed on a stretch of Rombach Avenue, say from 35 to 25 miles per hour? I don't know that legally we can, but maybe it could be, from perhaps the Highway Patrol to the car wash. The car wash turn-in is really something. If you're standing out there, you watch the traffic, it's almost like you're on the Kentucky Speedway. I'm serious, because there will be people that just try to make that right-hand turn real quick in front of people that perhaps are wanting to turn left to go to the hotel or Aldees. And I don't want to see us be forced into a situation where we have to do something drastic, but I hate to see someone get killed trying to make that turn. And then the other thing, and here again, I'm not a fan of these, but I've seen them in other cities, they may work, especially coming in from this side, is there a possibility we need to install some rumble strips along this portion of Rombach Avenue? Yeah, I don't like the delineators, I agree with that, don't get me wrong, but I know that we're just trying to make people follow what the intent is to restrict the left-hand turns, but I've had some people ask me about it. And when constituents come to me and ask for me to bring things before the council, I want to do it. So Nick, I would like for us to at least sit down and talk about it. And, you know, I'm sure that Police Chief Fethan will be looking at some speed issues out there and so forth. Maybe we can even put the, your speed limit, watch your speed limit sign out there on Rombach. It seems like coming in from the east is where people are really accelerating, and then they have to jam on their brakes in order to adhere to the 35 mile an hour speed limit. So just a few ideas to consider. Will then ask the clerk to set up the State Services Committee meeting to discuss that and any other items that may happen to be on the screen.
Do you want to do that now or after everything's operational and we can see how it's working? I just, I don't know, because the project's not complete. We are still working out bugs in traffic control, in the signals, GPS clocks, all of those things are, it's not working as it's designed yet. I'm happy to set up the meeting, I don't mean that, I just wanted to, to just check in, so whatever you want.
What if we ask for an update on the project of the next council meeting?
That would be great, that would be.
Because I know there are various pieces and various dates of completion.
Brian has said it's working progress. Right. Mr. President, I can ask a little, uh?
Great.
Mr. Wells.
Oh, Mr. Wells, I didn't say, I'm sorry.
Going along with what Bill said, when Rombach and it comes down to Locust Street, the railroad track there by UDF, we need to get something done about that crossing right here. That railroad track is terrible, and people are complaining about it, and it's not good.
That's relatively new, believe it or not.
I know, it's terrible.
It's like, what, Brian, eight years, maybe?
No.
Less than that?
It's less than that.
I'd say five.
I think five, yeah. It was since I've been here.
And Donna, we're aware of a number of traffic issues that we don't want to discuss.
Donna, we can't touch that, that's a real one. We could, but it's.
Maybe we can talk to.
Well, there are still, we have to, we have to.
Absolutely.
Let's go ahead and say it, we'll work on the agenda.
We'll work on the agenda, okay. Great.
You might want to pass that down. I believe that's all you have, Mr. E.
That's all I have.
Finance Committee, Mr. Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one item ordinance, 2318, two supplemental appropriations. I've written them verbatim, we see it, but the public doesn't, this financial items document. The first is General Fund updated codified ordinances, some of 3,000. The cost of legal review, codification, and ordinance posting are higher than expected for the current year. Some of these charges are per page, so any costs fluctuate with the number of pages submitted for codification. And the second one is from the General Fund of Building Development Inspection and Supplemental Services, for 6,000. The cost of building permanent inspection services have gone up this year. Aside from those great statements from Clark Dr. Ante, I have no further information for you, gentlemen, or are there any questions pertaining those two supplemental appropriations? Seeing none, as usual, I move to give the first reading only on ordinance 2318 by title only.
Second.
Motion over, I second, by Osborne, 2318. Ordinance 2318, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Maybe a first reading, please.
In ordinance, making supplemental appropriations.
I move to suspend rules and regulations, give ordinance 2318, second, third reading, by title only.
Second.
Motion second for suspension, rules, roll call, please.
Learman.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Albright.
Yes.
Ewman.
Yes.
Hirkie.
Yes.
McKay.
He.
Snar.
Yes.
Motion carries. May we have second, third reading?
In ordinance, making supplemental appropriations.
And I move to pass ordinance 2318 as read.
Second.
Motion second for passing ordinance 2318, roll call, please.
Osborne.
Yes.
Albright.
Yes.
Ewman.
Yes.
Hirkie.
Yes.
McKay.
Yes.
Snar.
Yes.
And Learman.
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2318 passes.
No further items, sir, I'll pass this microphone down.
Positionary Committee, Mr. Bert.
For the first time in a long time, I have no report.
No way.
I know. I know.
You don't want to say anything?
Well, no, I can't, actually. No, I, I do want to bring up something that was sent internally, but we do talk about it here, so I will address the annualized utility rate review. It's part of our code ordinances that every April, we look at all of our utilities every year and adjust each one according to strategic plan slash, you know, surplus debts, whatever we have each year. So we are still waiting on getting some final interest rates from the wastewater treatment plant in order to be able to effectively evaluate this. So we're going to finish April without delivering on that, so I just wanted to address why. We're anticipating our first meeting of May, possibly the second meeting of May, of having all those numbers together. So we will still be having our annual rate review, but just to be pushed back a little bit so that it's more accurate once we know the, the interest rates on the wastewater treatment plant. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Bert. Public Works Enterprise Committee, Mr. Snar.
No report, Mr. President.
That does complete our Board of Counsel. We do have the August Report for March 2023, what is your pleasure?
Motion to be accepted as presented?
Second.
Motion second to accept the August Report as presented, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Report is accepted.
No, I did, actually.
You made the motion?
No, I made the motion.
Motion second. That's how I got the second, not the first.
Thank you. Sorry.
No, no, that's.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Point of order, would it be possible now, we could entertain the possibility of at least giving a voice of support for the Wilmington School Levy? I know we have nothing prepared, but I mean, just.
Sure.
I would certainly think it would be good just to lend our support to the Wilmington School Levy. And as a result, I would make the notion that we give a resolution intent to support the Wilmington School Levy on May 2nd.
Motion by Learman, do we have second?
Second.
And second by Albright, all in favor of accepting the motion as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. All right. Any other business, freehold, if we have, moving up to the public? If not, we are opening the meeting to the public. Please keep your comments three minutes or less. And do we have a list of folks who would like to speak to us?
Yes, we do.
Pardon?
First up is Jason Stute.
Yeah, let me know, you are ready.
Oh. Jason Stute, 118 South Boulevard. This Sunday, as I was crossing Power Infamous Ministry, I come across a non-responsive elderly man just laying there, all but dead, and they're flared dead. He wasn't dead. I'm gonna try to keep this short. Made a comment on social media about it. About five minutes after I get to make the comment, I get a picture of the man at a gas station. What had happened, this gentleman had been at a gas station down towards Clarkville. He was either drunk or intoxicated, high, diabetic, somewhere. He wasn't right. Sheriff Park was called. They switched deputies mid-scene. This elderly gentleman was loaded up into the cruiser, brought into Wilmington, and dumped at the ministry and had to be helped out of the sheriff cruiser. I don't know if politics are in play, or why our own sheriff department is dumping elderly sick people on the ministry on Sunday morning, but if anybody can research this and ask why the sheriff's department is dumping people there as they drove past the hospital, they drove past home of shelter, and dumped him at a closed ministry. Thank you.
Next, we have Jane Johns.
Let me know, just, there's two of each, I think that should be the leader of these. They're not gonna make sense, they're out of order.
Jason, you're done. I am out of control over here, I'm so sorry.
I am out of control over here. I'm so sorry.
Are you ready?
I think you guys all are aware what I have handed out here. This is social media by your code enforcement officer, Annan Vance, in your city of Wilmington employee handbook. You guys have social media addressed. I didn't mind the attacks when it was on me. But now that it's gone on to community members attacking Diane Boomcutter Garrett for making mistakes on a social media post which she took down, and Annan Vance went on the attack and called her out where she worked, the Murphy Theater, called her out, and she also wrote for the newspaper. This is not right. Annan thanks a lady for... Oh, it's in the paper. I can't think of her name off the top of my head right now. For calling Diane Boomcutter Garrett out on social media. Annan was encouraging a social media attack, okay? These are posts, and I'm sorry, I rushed to do these, but these are posts of my group, my crime group. I also have social media posts where Annan is trash, helping trash talk keyboard warriors on a social media post. Wilmington crime concern, that is mine, okay? I also want to pull in your last call. We have a violation of sunshine law where Mark McKay, Michael Albright, Brett Ruddock, and Jonathan McKay were all tagged on a social media post about my fear of being hurt or attacked by Annan because of my distaste, for lack of better words, for sugary ministry and the lack of accountability, okay? You go through these. Brett, you commented. Mark, you commented. You guys are all in this, okay? This is a violation. Do I need to read your city laws on this? So employees should use their best judgment, not the post material inappropriate or harmful to the city of Wilmington and its employees or citizens. If the employee encounters a situation while using social media that threatens to become... Employees should disengage from the dialogue in a polite manner and seek the advice of a supervisor. Not done. One, sorry, maybe it did. She did reach out to Brett Ruddock, and the laughing went on from there. Social media shouldn't interfere with the employee's responsibility at the city of Wilmington. She is on it during social media or during working hours.
Thanks, Stute. Wrap it up.
Okay, this last one. If the employee publishes content after hours that involves work or subjects associated with the city of Wilmington, a disclaimer should be used, such as "The posting on this site or my own and may not represent the city's position, strategies, or opinions." This has not been done. I am calling for her to be removed from the city as the code enforcement officer.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you.
No chair?
We don't need that. We don't need that. Thank you, Jane.
And if you guys would like more copies, I can hand over my own stuff.
Good question. I just want to clarify. I can't speak to the city handbook versus employee issue, but for a quorum of counsel on social media, two council members, would that make a quorum? My, and Jane, the reason why I'm asking is my understanding of this, and I, like I said, I'm asking because I could be wrong. My understanding was that it is the seven of us are a quorum of counsel, so had there been a third, like Mark and Brett, in this case, represent different entities. So I don't know about that, that one. I can't speak to the rest of what you said, but I just...
What about the sunshine law?
That's what I'm asking. I don't know.
A quorum requires, obviously, majority of council. Mark McKay is the president of council, he has a count towards it. I don't even really... Obviously, I don't count towards it. Additionally, it's a small town, so if you guys decided to go to the... General Denver, they had dinner at the same time. It's not like you have to leave or turn away from each other. It's a small town. I'm not sure or familiar with what this was about ultimately.
I'll research, because I don't want to...
City business is not being conducted, is my understanding.
And then Brett, it has to be a quorum of committee as well, and Michael and I do not sit on a committee together, as far as I know. So there was no, there was nothing broken there as far as you know, committee.
I guess since I'm being included, I guess I'm conflicted out, but I don't believe there's any, you know, remotely a sunshine violation. I mean, my concerns are that she's presenting have more to do with maybe perhaps a violation of the handbook policy related to statements generated by city employees on social media.
Yeah, well, that's...
So much more complicated than that. I really can't speak to it.
That's not for me to necessarily speak to. I just, I wanted to clarify. This is a very real thing, and, you know, we were required every term to do an ethics and sunshine training, and so it's brought up every time. So I wanted to clarify that I don't know that qualifies, but I'll dig in and find out.
I would appreciate that.
So, because that is, I just have to...
And where do I need to get it?
If there's a, if there's a comment by the city employee, if there's a comment by the city employee and then other city employees join in on the fund, would that not make them just as guilty as this?
I don't know. I can't, I don't know.
I think it would, because they're trying to...
My understanding of sunshine would be that it would be if we're conducting city business.
Rearrange. Where's the key word?
We're kind of in an area where...
I know. I wanted to...
We don't really have.
I wanted to ask for clarification.
All right.
Thank you for indulging.
Sure. Next speaker.
Next, we have Dustin Pierce. Just letting you know when you're ready.
I'm ready. Okay, so I'm Dustin Pierce, two hundred and twenty-seven, six west, Locust Road. I was going to talk about the school. I know Tim has talked about it already, so I actually want to share some thoughts as well. I'm someone who has gone back and forth on the issue of the school levy for many of the concerns that I think are shared in the community, whether things like leadership, discipline issues, academic performance, social political issues. Just wondering if costs can be cut and generally just not want to get more taxes. However, a few months ago, I got to take a trip to Portsmouth, Ohio, with our mayor, John Stanford, and city planner, Taylor Stuckey, and about some ideas for renovating the Masonic Lodge. And I remember on that trip, John sharing about the value a public school has to bring the community together, and Taylor sharing about the power that we as citizens have to cause the change that we want to see without voting no by doing things like attending school board meetings and getting engaged. So I'm someone who values both bringing my community together and believes in the power to create positive and constructive change without saying no. So what they both had to say clearly designated with me, my values, and the way I'm as a person. I did take the next step to interview a lot of the school staff, which you can listen to on nochainwilmington.com. You can also email them directly. Their emails are all available on the school's website. They're very easy to get. So there are practical reasons for voting yes for the school levy. One is our schools are our community, so the students that spend twelve years at our schools may spend eighty years as our neighbors and the people we see every day. Surrounding schools do have fees and pay-to-play costs. They seem to make that work, but I think it would be great if we could help every student who's a day in arts and sports programs, regardless of their parents' financial situations. Ultimately, the point seven, five percent tax, if you make fifty thousand dollars a year, collects to thirty-one dollars and twenty-five cents a month, which is not very much money. It's like Netflix costs. Another point is good schools attract and retain families and businesses. Good schools contribute to higher property values. Leadership at the school has talked about an alternative schooling option next year for separating students who have disrespected and assaulted their students or teachers. And doing this, they both learn consequences, but don't get themselves into a hole academically that they can't get out of and as they mature. There's certainly some difference of opinions, probably of cultural and political issues, things like critical race theory, which I was assured is not being taught at the schools in that part of the curriculum, and also issues with gender identity, which is a hot topic. Other school couldn't talk about that directly because it's so litigious. They did make the statement that there are certain things the state passes down to them that they have no control over. I'm about done.
Just wrap it up.
Yeah, so they, so my thought would be if we have issues about those sorts of political things, to take them up with the state and not defund our local community schools. So in closing, I don't think this issue is just about a school tax. It's about our community and our home. And I believe they have the power to create positive change, restore pride in our district, and reflect community values in our schools without voting no, so we should be engaged in voting yes for W C S.
Thank you for your comments.
Next is Jack Stoffer. Jack, come on.
I hadn't reminded that we do need a name and address. Sure. Or do we, since they already signed?
I have a record.
My name is Jack Stoffer with Stoffer Sex Services. That's my company name. Thank you. I live in Morro, Ohio. I'm fifteen minutes down the road. Sure. Anyhow, I've come into the gate tonight because I recently bid on the Landville Phase Eight construction project that I did last month. I'll try to keep this brief. I have the copy of the legal ad with me, advertising for the job, this one I've bid and everything. In bold print, it says a mandatory pre-bid meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, February fourteenth. It's at the Landville, time and place. I turned in a bid on the job, as did other, as did two other bidders. The low bidder was not in attendance at the pre-construction meeting, where vital information was discussed, a landfill tour was conducted, questions were asked, responses were given. Basically, they did not attend the mandatory pre-bid meeting. I, I'm not, I was told that the job was awarded to the low bidder, even though they did not meet the requirement of the mandatory meeting. I, this is... This is just not something that happens. I mean, this is not a common occurrence. If it is advertised in the legal ad that there is a mandatory meeting, only, only people that attended the meeting are eligible to bid on that job. That is pretty cut and dried. That's like, if they're having a bid opening at eleven a.m. and you turn in a bid at eleven oh five, it's thrown out, or it's not open. It's just, it's black and white. I emailed Mr. Scheider about it. He wrote me a letter back saying that he believed that it did not. Give the low bidder an unfair advantage or anything against the other bidders? I mean, I guess that's a difference of opinion, maybe open for interpretation. But my position is that since the low bidder did not comply with the requirements of the job, I feel like the job should be mine. Now, if it's already awarded, I don't know what there is to do about that, but I want to emphasize the integrity in the public bidding process. I bid a lot of public jobs. I've been doing this for ten years. Most of our work is municipality work. We've done, we did the Grand Street Quartermaine job for the city of Wilmington a couple of years ago. I've bid on multiple other jobs since then. I just haven't ended up being low on them, so... Anyhow, it's, I'm almost done.
I will just put in your comments.
I would like to emphasize that the... That integrity of the bidding system is not being upheld in this situation. And I would, I just want to bring that to your attention because this is not, this is not a common occurrence. It's just, I can't, honestly, I can't believe we're having this conversation. So I would encourage you to look into the matter as you see fit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Shelley Knowles. Just letting you know we're here. Ready to go? Shelley Knowles, by the deep blue.
Thank you, Lewis.
Mr. Ray, councilmembers, thank you for your time. I just have a few questions that have come concerning city ordinances. Just by public things. One, littering, public intoxication, and open container. I'm just wondering who upholds those and who enforces those? Because I have witnessed... So I didn't know if it was legal to be publicly intoxicated. And what encompass is that? Is that just alcohol? Is that drugs? Littering, can't really walk a city block without seeing trash everywhere. Who is responsible for that? And the open container, I witnessed when we moved the city cemetery. So I was just curious how we can get those enforced, if, and if they are. I pulled up the city website and tried to look at the ordinances to see the code, but I'm a layman. I don't truly understand all the lingo, so...
Maybe the chief can weigh in on this for us.
Absolutely. The charges you're talking about, we do enforce those. The public intoxication is really called disorderly conduct. That would, actually, what we do, we actually charge under the higher advice code, not the city ordinances. The reason we do that is, once a judge convicts and sees them at their initial appearance, they're charged under a state code. We're not responsible for transport back into Fort Mill Hospital or anything like that, or they need to go to a medical hospital. The O R C section for littering, littering means anywhere in the city. As long as we see somebody dump it, they can be charged with littering. Once again, the higher advice code. Open container, if you saw it, please call us. We did, okay. See me afterwards and I'll get with you.
As far as the littering goes, if there is trash in certain spots, there's lots of trash. By U D S, in the creek there, by Buckley's. I mean, it's everywhere. Who is responsible for that?
What we'd have to do, we'd have to get with the service department, let them know we have to get a day to schedule with them, get that cleaned up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley.
I might call it for selling. If you caught me, our street sweeper is broken.
Excuse me?
The street sweeper is broken.
Okay.
That's why you're safe. You're breathing.
Siri, here. Let me know if I can help.
Thank you. Next participant.
Next on the list is Tim, but he's already spoken, and I think he's totally gone and he doesn't want to do that again. Okay, next on the list is Tony Thomas.
Hi, I'd just like to address a couple of things I read in the paper concerning the mayor here. Seeing him standing next to a guy spraying the de-salter formula, that's like a hundred and fifty bucks a quart, and stating that it saves taxpayers money. Will the state stop using that ten years ago, sir, just to inform you that it does not work, nor has it ever. You will never stop salt. Secondly, where else but in Wilmington, Ohio, can we have a mayor standing in front of schools, preaching about schools owing fifteen hundred dollars in school taxes?
Mr. Thomas.
Yes, sir.
Turn around this way, please.
I'd like to address everyone. I'd like to address everyone. I'm replying, and where else in this, but in the city of Wilmington?
And do not attack a...
I'm not attacking anyone, I'm stating facts.
Yes, you are.
That's what it asks about.
I will ask you to be removed if you do not.
Do it. I'm, I'm...
Would you like for me to?
Yes, sir, please.
All right.
Please remove him.
You need to be seen and disrupted.
Nazi belt.
Right there. Disrupt the public meeting.
I just want to reiterate the rules for public speaking here. You have three minutes. You have the right to speak. You do not have the right to attack verbally. If you do, you will be removed. Mr. Thomas is going to be on his way to jail for misdemeanor to fourth degree disruptive of public meeting. So if we want to continue this pattern, we will take you to jail each and every time.
Does it work both ways? I heard him to interrupt.
All right, you can be removed.
They can gather.
I haven't even spoken. I'm talking to him. I'm not even... See what I mean?
You're not due.
Do you see what I mean? Are you going to charge him?
We need order.
I didn't get...
You're talking out of order.
Then you be quiet.
Take him out. Yes, please.
I'll take you out of here. I'll tell you that. That's real before a backbone of a...
All right. Thank you. I am. I think I am.
That looks like Arrow Petrie. Would you like to come forward, Jeff? There you are.
Hi, Mrs. Petrie.
The sole reason I've come to these meetings is to advocate for the man who just removed from the meeting about his dead daughter and his murder that we can prove. I have been here numerous times asking about records that belong to him and me about the investigations conducted by the city of Wilmington. Those records and evidence are still being withheld from us. You have wrongfully demonized us, just like you have tonight, for requesting records and asking questions about the death of Casey Pedser. To summarize, Mr. Mayor, I have approached you thirty to forty times via email, phone, social media, and in person. You have yet to answer to all the huge scandals you are directly involved in. It is the, it is the only thing that you can do is laugh and smile at us. And you wonder why we get upset. No one likes being laughed at, especially when we are here asking about such serious and reasonable questions regarding murders. A good mayor would never laugh and smile at anyone who is asking questions about murder, but you do. I'd expect you to do better. You invaded in the whitewashed murder of two Clinton County citizens by doing nothing.
You're attacking the mayor.
What's been done is unacceptable.
I'll ask you to stop that.
What's been done is unacceptable.
You're done, jail, on right there. Disruptive public meeting.
Are you kidding me?
That's resisting arrest if you put you in handcuffs. You understand that?
Well, you guys, you guys see this. Unbelievable. I'm going to jail too, huh?
I'm sorry.
Continue with service.
Thank you. Appreciate your help. So sorry, folks, for that. But hopefully we can keep things more settled in the future. Do we have any other speakers?
There's no one else on the list unless anyone who has not already spoken.
I just have a question. How do I get a reply back from you guys? How do I get a reply back from you guys?
Are you asking about a legal question related to the sunshine law violation? I can provide that. My only concern is that you indicated I was a part of something, so that could create a conflict. I'm not sure if you would be willing to waive that so I can provide it, or would you rather an outside counsel?
I just don't know how I get feedback from you. That's all I'm asking.
Our law director has indicated he will respond.
I don't, we blocked my email, so I can probably still...
Email, fine, thank you.
It's the only way I can come at least.
Thank you. Anyone else?
There is no one else on the list.
All right. Then that completes the public portion of the meeting. Completes our regular council meeting. We do have an executive session scheduled, so if we could have a motion to move into executive session, please.
I want to, is it appropriate to remind that there may be action afterward?
Yes.
So, given that, I'll move to enter executive session under Higher Advice Code 121.22, or Section G I-1 and Section G I-3.
Have a motion by Lerman to enter into executive session. May we have a roll call, please?
Albright?
Yes.
Eblin?
Yes.
Perkey?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lerman?
Yes.
We are now in executive session. I ask for the audience, except for those who might involve anything. Appreciate you all coming to the session, and there may be action afterwards.